That's your cue that we're now in public session. Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Academic Affairs, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Henry Berger.
Present.
Trustee Romania Palacio.
Present.
Trustee Oberfell.
Here.
I see you waving. Got you. Bestie Burke.
Present.
Professor Alatrist is the faculty alternate.
Present.
The student rep is Vaughn Maers. I don't know if I saw Vaughn join yet, but I see the student alternate Jamie Lerner-Bircher.
Present.
Great. We have a quorum, Jill.
Okay, thanks. So the public meeting of the Committee on Academic Policy, Programs, and Research is now called to order. Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the Open Meetings Law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar or agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now ask the Secretary of the Board to take a roll call attendance from members of the Chancellery.
Excellent. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez, I see you just joined us.
Yes.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Great. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons.
Present.
Excellent. And I think we have in the waiting room, I will, somebody just let him in, President Vincent Boudreau, who is the COPS liaison. Maybe he didn't hear us yet. President Patricia Ramsey.
Here.
Yep, thanks Vince. Dean Gregory Mancio. Terrific. Linda Essig, the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Baruch.
Present.
Jessica Lang, the Dean of the Weisman School of Arts and Sciences at Baruch.
I'm here.
Dr. Zulema Blair, Department Chair.
Assistant.
Terrific. Gladys Schrendemakers, Associate Dean of Academic Affairs at the School of Labor and Urban Studies.
Present. Thank you.
Michael Parrish, Provost and Senior Vice President of the College of Staten Island. Not here yet. And I do understand that we have an addition, Mr. Rich, Andrew Rich, if you could introduce yourself. Somebody, I am glad to have you, but somebody invited you and we don't have you on the list. Because no one's supposed to share the invites. So I apologize if your name wasn't called with the regular roll call, but if you could just introduce yourself so we have your title.
Yeah, sure. I'm the Colin Powell School for Civic and Global Leadership at City College. And President Boudreau had invited me.
Vince.
He sent it. He sent an email. I saw the, I saw the email.
Don't worry about it. Okay. So you're good. You're good, Jill.
I absolutely sent an email following the link where it said, if you need somebody else. So I sent that in.
So let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that board members are participating remotely and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I will read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be counted as a yes vote. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record and then let's try to avoid speaking over one another. So now on to action items. Action items 1A is the approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2022 meeting. I move the item. May I have a second?
Burke, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we will now vote. And again, please only respond if you wish to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. Like to now address action item B, the policy calendar. Policy item 1B1 is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in Black and Latino studies leading to the Bachelor of Arts degree at Baruch College. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide further background on this item. Dan?
Thank you, Chair O'Donnell Torme, and good afternoon, everyone. The proposed program in Black and Latino studies will build on an existing curriculum that respects Black, Indigenous, Latin American, and US Latin peoples as social activists. The proposed program will focus on intersections between Black and Latino studies and its transdisciplinary approaches will draw on faculty expertise and humanities while providing critical tools to engage pressing questions of racial and social justice. At this time, I invite my esteemed colleague, Professor Linda Essig from Baruch College, to say more about this proposal.
Thank you so much. It is really an honor to be able to present this to you on this last day of February Black History Month. Black and Latino Studies, as Provost Lemmons mentioned, is an interdisciplinary and transdisciplinary course of study that centers the knowledge productions by people of the African Caribbean and Latin American diasporas in the United States and globally. The major builds on a curriculum that respects Black, Indigenous, Latin American, and US Latinx peoples as intellectuals, cultural producers, and activists. It maintains a scholarly interest in critical questions about race, identity, and justice that offers connections between academic lessons and real-world concerns. The BLS major will provide students tools to develop solutions to social issues rooted in longstanding and persistent racial and social inequities. Black and Latino Studies produces change-oriented, solutions-driven analysis with an emphasis on applied learning in the service of equity and change. It encourages innovation, critical creative thinking, active learning, and the development of practical skills that prepare students for socially engaged careers that will contribute to more just and equitable futures. Black and Latino Studies also offers connections between classrooms and communities. In this way, fieldwork coupled with research is central to the BLS major. This crucial feature of the major's design is unique in its ethical commitment to community development as well as to racial and social justice. The program of study is intended for student success. We designed core electives to offer a foundation and intersectional thinking about race and gender, while they also provide critical tools for engaging pressing questions concerning racial and social justice locally, nationally, and globally. Students will practice both qualitative and quantitative analyses and research in its coursework. The major is also defined by a commitment to fieldwork and to public-facing research projects. Graduates will be prepared for careers in law, education, marketing, finance, public affairs, journalism, in the arts, and more. Thank you.
I'm going to move this item. Can I have a second?
Burke, second.
Thank you, Henry. Is there now any discussion on this item? I see you already have it set up in terms of participations of other not-for-profit and community organizations as part of, is that all just like more like internship-type things? Or is this going to be actually research-based projects using these community groups?
My understanding is both. I do have our Dean Lang of the Weisman School here to answer more specific questions. But, but yes, it is both public-facing research, public scholarship, if you may, as well as internships.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, we will now vote. Please only again respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. Congratulations. So policy item 1B2 is a resolution regarding the establishment of an associate of science program in criminal justice at Medgar Evers College. Again, I'll call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons.
Thank you, Chair O'Donnell Torme. Sometimes students have expressed an interest in pursuing criminal justice education at Medgar Evers College. One reason being that public policy debate with respect to law enforcement-related issues has often marginalized the voices of Black and Brown communities. This is why the nationally renowned Department of Public Administration at Medgar Evers College aims to establish a culturally competent criminal justice program that speaks to the experiences of all income, race, gender, and ethnic groups that will eventually lead to a new criminal justice paradigm. At this time, I invite my esteemed colleague, President Patricia Ramsey from Medgar Evers College, to say more about this proposed action.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. And Dan mentioned that we have a nationally acclaimed program in the Department of Public Administration. I'd just like to brag a little bit that we are actually number eight in the nation in that department. One of the fastest-growing departments at Medgar Evers College. And at this time, our students don't have a trusted space where they can actually have this new generation of criminal justice professionals being developed. And so we think that this program will be something that will be very significant for CUNY. And as boards often want to know whether or not there is any duplication, I'd just like to address that there is no duplication of services because the other programs that are in CUNY and the associate degree area at the community colleges serve a different student population. And over the years, the students have expressed an interest in the field of criminal justice but did not find a specific upfront pathway to these opportunities within the current degree structure. This degree program provides that opportunity and a gateway to the many criminal justice career opportunities that only require 60 credits with a continuing pathway to the BS in Public Administration with different concentrations that have a law and public policy focus and other concentrations that will allow students to explore these career trajectories internationally.
Thank you very much. I will move the item, so may I have a second?
Oberfell, second.
Thanks, Brian. We'll now have a discussion on the item. Any discussion or questions? Henry?
Yeah, I understand that this is a lead-in to your own bachelor's program. Is there a formal agreement with John Jay, an articulation agreement, to lead this into the John Jay bachelor's program?
I will allow my, the Department Chair, Dr. Blair, to respond specifically to that question, please. Dr. Blair?
Yes, thank you, President Ramsey. And Mr. Berger, there is not a formal articulation. In the resolution, we do have language that states that they are able to, and in the agreement, if they want to go to John Jay. But we wanted to open up this space for students to explore other options, non-traditional options, nonprofit administration, community development, law and public policy, and other disaster management planning issues, as well as the global sphere in terms of criminal justice. So while students are free to attend John Jay, as most have been able to transfer into John Jay when they don't have a formal degree program at Medgar Evers College, the formal articulation at this time is at Medgar Evers College.
I think it would be helpful for the students to know that all of their credits in the associate program will be accepted by John Jay towards their bachelor program since it is specifically mentioned in the resolution.
The CUNY Pathways Program allows 60 credits from wherever the students are transferring from, and John Jay has similar courses on the books as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will now vote. Again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Policy item 1B3 is a resolution regarding the establishment of the School of Science and Allied Health at Medgar Evers College. Again, I will call on Provost Dan Lemmons. You're muted, Dan.
That has to happen once, right, in every meeting? Thank you, Chair O'Donnell Torme. The presence of the School of Science and Allied Health will demonstrate Medgar Evers College's commitment to addressing the needs of Central Brooklyn, which has been one of the most negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Moreover, the proposal for this school will help fill a health career gap in New York City and the state of New York. This time, I again invite my esteemed colleague, President Ramsey, from Medgar Evers, to say more about this proposed action.
Thank you very much. We are excited about this possibility as it relates to this new School of Science and Allied Health in that we have received funding from the city in the amount of $10.8 million for us to actually have a focus on health. And so what better way to do that than to have a single school that has divisions where you have a focus on science and a focus on health because the science helps to inform the health. And so we have had the meeting of the Executive Board of the College Council to vote on this, all of the faculty in the school, of the current School of Science, Health, and Technology that would be the affected faculty, actually are the ones who came up with the name for the new school through a very data-driven process so that there will be objectivity. And all of the faculty that are in the current departments of Biology, Chemistry, Environmental Science, Department of Math, Department of Physics, and Computer Science will be moved to the Division of Science in the new School of Science and Allied Health. And the Department of Nursing will be moved to the Division of Allied Health in the new School of Science and Allied Health, along with future departments in health-related disciplines. As you all know, the Board passed the new Bachelor of Science Program in Community Health. And so we are beginning development of health courses. And when we are able to add on additional faculty to the health area, then we will have a burgeoning allied health group. And so I would really love it if we would have an opportunity to have this new school and the College Council actually also voted in support of this unanimously.
Thank you very much, President Ramsey. So I will move the item. May I have a second?
Burke, second.
Thanks, Henry. Now, is there discussion on this item? I do have a question in terms of establishing the school. Do you anticipate the need for hiring more faculty? Or you feel you are set to initiate with what you have with the transfer of people from the departments of the various biologies and mathematics departments?
Well, the proposal actually provides funding for new dean as well as for new faculty. And so we will, we will be adding new faculty.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item passes. Congratulations. So policy item 1B4 is a resolution regarding the establishment of the Leadership for Democracy and Social Justice at CUNY Institute at City College and the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies. Now call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide further background.
Thank you, Chair. The mission of this proposed CUNY Institute for Leadership for Democracy and Social Justice is to support the diverse cohorts of leaders from the communities of New York City and nationally who are at the forefront of the social justice movement. The institute will help early and mid-career social justice leaders in those movements to build their power across disciplines through intensive cohort programs for early and mid-career participants, paid internships, options to connect to degree-granting academic programs, and wraparound services including mentorship, career services, community building, and an active alumni program. At this time, I invite my esteemed colleagues, President Vincent Boudreau and Dean Andrew Rich from City College, and also Dean Gregory Mancio, and Associate Dean Gladys Schrendemakers from the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies, to say more about this proposal and to answer your questions.
Oh, thank you, Dan, and good afternoon. It's really a pleasure to introduce the discussion of this institute, the Leadership for Democracy and Social Change Institute. This is a joint initiative of CCNY and CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies. Dean Mancios and I are deeply excited about this new initiative. We've both been very involved in the planning, and we've consulted with faculty at both institutions. The proposed institute will be a training space for mid-career social justice leaders nationally and here in City College. It'll create opportunities, instruction, mentorship, career services for our students from all across the university. There's nothing like this institute at CUNY or in the nation. And we spent two years planning it with conversations across the country and across CUNY. I'm also pleased to report that we've raised nearly $7 million for the launch of this. And so we won't require any fiscal support from the university to launch the initiative. CCNY will be the main physical and fiscal home of the initiative with satellite offices at SLU. I'd like to say we have terrific leaders to getting the project off the ground. It comes out of the Colin Powell School for Civic and Global Leadership at CCNY, where Andy Rich, who's the dean, has been playing a leading role there. And I'm going to ask him to say a little bit more about this in just a second. But he's also collaborated with lead organizers of the new institute, and that's Gera Lamarche, who's an instructor at CCNY, and the former CEO of Atlantic Philanthropies and US Programs for the Open Society Program, and Deepak Bhargava, who is a distinguished lecturer at SLU and the former CEO of Community Change. At CCNY, we followed the appropriate governance procedures to get this forwarded from our campuses. SLU has done the same. I've been consulted about staffing plans for the institute, and I'm in support of the structure that's outlined in the proposal. It's also a proposal that happens to be tightly aligned, I think, with CUNY's developing strategic priorities and those of both of our campuses, which is to be more student-centered, more equity-driven in the service of catalyzing upward social mobility in our society and economic prosperity for students, their families, and their communities. So we're very much looking forward to getting this important work underway. And with that, let me ask Dean Rich from the Colin Powell School to tell you a little bit more.
Thank you very much, President Boudreau. It's great to be with you today. And I'm more because President Boudreau covered much of this, but let me just elaborate a little bit. So the new institute, as has been mentioned, it's a place designed to recruit, support, train, and mentor early and mid-career social justice organizers and leaders nationally, here in New York City, and with a particular focus on our students, our alumni across CUNY. The two CUNY schools, City College and CUNY SLU, but it will have opportunities for students at every CUNY campus. And I want to also add my special thanks to Dean Mancios, as well as to Gladys Schrendemacher for their incredible partnership and leadership in all of this. The institute's premised on the proposition that there is a huge and encouraging diverse talent in existing social justice organizations, in new social movements, and on college campuses. A wave of folks with the potential to lead social change in this city and this nation. But this is difficult work in organizations that are often under-resourced and inadequately managed in the same ways that we see it across the private sector of government. Even in social justice spaces, employees and leaders trend white and wealthy. So as is true with much of what we do around leadership development at CUNY, the new Leadership Center aims to change that with a particular focus on serving women and people to diversify the ranks of social justice leaders and to help them avoid burnout by early mid-career leaders with co-curricular training and with academic programs. And with a unique combination of career services to help them find roles and move among roles as leaders. At its core, it's not a research institute, although it supports some types of research and publications, and it might become something of a clearinghouse. We do events, but it's fundamentally a training institute. It's for our students and the students and non-students and alumni. The institute will be ecumenical. Its approach to leadership development is organized around four key elements that all participants will experience: strategy, power organizing, and social movements; social skill development, management, fundraising, finance, and then leadership. And our ambitions are to ramp it up to serve hundreds of participants at a time. So that's the work. And I'll just make a couple of points. As has been mentioned, the institute's about two years in planning. We've had hundreds of conversations in New York City and nationally, focus groups from across the different campuses and in the community with social justice. We've talked with faculty, staff, and alumni and have made sure to make a collaborative process. The overall finding is that there's huge students, alums, faculty, staff, and community partners, and there's room for what we're doing. First early career cohort program right now, we receive more than 200 applications for just, so there's a lot of interest. We have made sure this is not anything else at CUNY. It is distinctive, but it has the potential to become a partner. Social justice initiatives at CUNY. We're excited about that. So we're deeply committed to a collaborative. As Vince said, the institute launches with full funding secured for its first two years, all with private philanthropy, so we don't need any money from the colleges or CUNY to start. We've raised almost seven, the Ford, Hewlett, Wellspring, Open Society, the Democracy Fund, Com-Spring, and more. And we're in deep conversations with additional donors, both founding. So we're confident in the fundraising, and we're not asking CUNY or the colleges for any direct. It might over time require nominal support from the colleges, but less than 5%. Mostly in ways that contribute to the college's mission rather than the institute's. And in fact, that's my next point. The institute will bring resources to the colleges. Around career services on both campuses, we'll be serving students, supporting a career counselor at SLU, at least two distinguished lecturer faculty lines at CCNY, and support in stipends and scholarships. We've already mentioned the two lead figures, Deepak Bhargava, who's a distinguished lecturer at SLU, formerly a community change, and Gera Lamarche, who's now at the Colin Powell School. We've known them both for over 20 years. They're phenomenal and really have been the brain trust behind this. We've hired the first staff, and we're now starting to search for an executive director. And we have a national advisory board, 27 people, just to name a few. Christina Jimenez, who's the founder of United We Dream, and is a Queens College graduate. Cecilia Munoz, who was a council under President Obama. And Heather McGee, who's the author of Some of Us, and he was a lecturer at SLU. The institute has been approved, as Vince said, through all the required technical governance processes on both campuses. And there's been extensive comment on that. And we are committed to adhering to all the requirements of CUNY institutes, including our regular audits of our finances. Last, I'd say, we really think that this institute and its mission derive really directly from CUNY's commitment to social justice, and we think it's really built into the DNA of City University of New York. So all of us at City College are excited about it, and the same is true at SLU. And I'll stop there. Thanks for the chance to talk about it with you.
Thank you, Andrew. It sounds like a wonderful program. Congratulations on the fundraising. It sounds like it's a sustainable budget for at least the first three years, and I know you'll be continuing funding as you go along. Do we have other, I guess I will now move the item. So may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Amy has her hand up, too.
We're sorry. Okay.
I'd like to hear from Dean Mancios what role SLU is going to play in this. It's an exciting program, so let's start there.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Burke. This is an extraordinary and exciting opportunity, I think, for both schools and for the university. I can't think of two better institutions to do this. The Colin Powell School dedicated to civic and global leadership, and SLU dedicated to public service and social justice. We are here to prepare the next generation of labor and community leaders. Our faculty, this has really been faculty-driven to a large extent. And we're very fortunate to have not only the funders and external organizations dedicating resources to this, but we also have enormous internal capabilities in terms of the faculty that we are bringing to this. Our faculty have developed a new certificate program in organizing for social change. This is a brand-new certificate program, both on the undergraduate and graduate level. The faculty from both campuses have collaborated on that. And we are not only willing and able, but very excited to be offering our services to this effort. We look to attract students into our certificate and ultimately into our degree programs from the institute. So we're thrilled, and I can't thank and praise our colleagues from City College enough for their efforts in this regard.
Well, will any of the academic courses be offered at SLU?
Yes. Matter of fact, yes. The certificate is, the two certificates I mentioned are SLU certificates. We also have a certificate in community leadership that may be the next phase for students interested in pursuing their degrees. These are stepping stones towards either a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. And we anticipate most of the students going through the non-credit And we anticipate most of the students going through the non-credit program, also enrolling in the SLU certificate programs and potentially the degree programs as well.
Jamie.
Hi, yeah, first of all, I wanted to say I'm incredibly impressed by this program. I was impressed by the proposal. I think it's really needed. I do have one concern. If you turn to page eight of the proposal talking about the mission statement and based on what you guys have said as well, it talks about the different groups that it wants to serve. And I know you guys specifically said by... And the fact that this has gone through two years and disabled identities wasn't part of it and isn't mentioned elsewhere. Given that one quarter of Black people, Black Americans, face some sort of disability in their life, given the, as we've... Directly disable Black communities more than other communities. I just want, and none of the organizations that you guys are partnered with look at disabled communities, especially disabled communities of color. Is this just an oversight? Is this something that you guys have decided not to pursue on purpose? Is this somebody that nobody's brought up until now?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it is not something that has come up in a direct way until now. So it's something we would welcome, an opportunity to partner with. And I'd be happy to follow up with you to talk more about it. But it has come up in the course of the conversations, but not in kind of as direct a way as you just mentioned it. So for sure, it's in alignment with what we're intending to do.
I would absolutely love to see it, especially given that CUNY is on the forefront of disability studies and is in the forefront of disability activism. Especially because it's an issue that's often, you know, there aren't disabled academics at the table and they're not even the ones to bring this up. So I would really love to see that as an area because I think, especially given the intersectional identities and given, you know, how the pandemic, especially in New York, has especially adversely affected disabled people of color. I think it's a really important aspect that I was a little upset to see that in the course of two years wasn't brought up once. But thank you for your answer.
And thank you for bringing it up.
Mania.
Thank you. This is a very exciting program. I just have sort of a suggestion as a sort of food for thought. Maybe already tracked, but I didn't see it explicitly, was, you know, these cohorts, I think, are, they can be very powerful sort of throughout the career trajectory. And I'm wondering, as you're thinking about the fundraising, to also find some way to sort of very explicitly sort of support sort of alumni in their trajectory and connections among alumni is because that sort of cross-collaborative leadership is critically important to civic society. And I think if the program could be more explicit in that post-program development, that would be a real asset.
We 100% agree with you. And it actually, it is built in. I'm sorry if it didn't come out clearly enough in the proposal, but there will be staff for alumni from the get-go. We are not kind of trying to catch up afterwards, but really engaging them all the way.
Great.
100%.
Martin, would I add anything to that regarding our career counselor, social justice career counselor?
I think actually I meant more sort of supporting the cohort as in like not supporting individual alumni, but supporting cohorts of alumni and sort of the collective leadership.
Yeah, in that spirit, what we hope is, you know, within, say, five years, when people say, "I've been through the leadership," it has a kind of instant recognition for what it means and which cohort were you a part of and that leads to your professional development and your personal development.
I mean, I will say that we have a pretty good history now at the college of running, you know, various leadership programs, the SCAD and ARPS program, the Colin Powell Fellowships program. Virtually all of them have a robust kind of cohort tracking to alumni. So it's something that we're set up to do. And I think, you know, it makes perfect sense to do it in this case as well.
Thank you. Martin.
Yes, I guess just a bit of clarification. As I understand it, CUNY institutes should not be involved in degree granting endeavors. From reading the proposal, this appears to be primarily continuing education. But at least some of the pixels that I've had in front of me, I've talked about the overlap, if you will, or dare I say, intersection of degree programs and the institute. So might someone clarify for me what the limits of the institute will be in terms of degree granting programs?
So I think I can, go ahead, Andy.
Well, I was going to just say clearly that there will be no degree granting programs. It simply won't be. It will, we will, it will create opportunities for students who are part of the institute to find degree granting programs, we hope, on both campuses over time. But just as an onboard or offboard, but not within the institute itself.
The degree programs and certificate programs are governed by our faculty. And the way we see it is that these non-credit programs will serve as feeders into certificate and degree programs that are under the jurisdiction of our respective faculty, not of the staff of the institute.
Really see them as stack credits. We really see them as stackable credits and experiences. First, the experience, and then hopefully a certificate and on to degrees.
Henry.
Yep, two things. One, in looking at the financials, it relies on a 2% annual tuition increase. And just given where the legislature is and where the board is, I don't think you can rely on that. I think at the moment, the desire to increase any tuitions, I think, is really not there. The other issue and the concern I have is the paperwork describes this as a $55 million program. And it's a great program. It's clearly going to grow. What happens if you're unable to raise the $55 million? Who puts up the shortfall? Is that going to have to come out of our tax levy budget?
No, 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 not at all. And I'm not sure where you're seeing that even, but absolutely not. We're committed to this being fully funded by philanthropy. And it will scale at the pace at which funds are raised to support it.
Any other direction?
Exactly, exactly. It could scale faster, it could scale slower. And I will say, just to report on that, you know, that the funds raised, we actually paused in the fundraising because we were so successful early on, honestly. And there's a number of other foundations and individual donors who are keen to get involved in the project once it's approved by CUNY, once it's operating at a certain scale so that we can actually be prepared to spend the money. So we feel pretty good about that. But I can assure you, there's no expectation of funding and that the focus will be on private philanthropy and scaling in whichever direction we can, based on how much we lose.
Good luck to you. It sounds like a very exciting program.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, we will now vote, again, only if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. Congratulations. So now on to Policy Item 1B5 is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPR dashboard. Again, I'll call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons.
Thank you Chair. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the University General Education Program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in a summary form. Introduced in October 2019, the CAPR dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with the summary data. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include that classification of six new general education courses among colleges, giving students more options to study the physical science, mathematics, and the humanities; 57 program actions, and three new or revised undergraduate policies.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I will move the item. Do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Any discussion? Questions? If not, we will now vote. Please, again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That passes unanimously. And then I guess there's an informational item. Informational Item 2A is about the academic amnesty policy for academically dismissed students that was included in the January 2022 CAPR dashboard. Again, I'll call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons to explain further.
Thank you. Students who've been academically dismissed from the college may apply for readmission after a period of time. These students can have a difficult time regaining good academic standing because their past grades continue to have a negative impact on their GPA. This can be frustrating for students upon their return because they may not be mathematically possible for them to earn enough As and Bs to bring their overall GPA up to at least a 2.0, the minimum required for good academic standing. And some majors require a minimum of 2.4, 2.5 to 3.0 GPAs. Removing all previously earned letter grades of A through F from the GPA calculation while designating them within CUNY First to still show the original grade earned would have the result of recognizing the coursework completed successfully and maintaining those credits while also providing the students an opportunity to complete their degrees at CSI. I can tell you that personally, over my years at CUNY, I've known a number of students in similar situations and seen some stellar turnarounds for students who were able to take that kind of course of action and put in going to law school and launching legal careers. So this time, I'd like to invite my esteemed colleague, Provost Michael Parrish from the College of Staten Island, to say more about this policy. Trustee Burger, you had raised this question about this previously.
Thank you very much, E.V. Lemmons. Great to see everybody and thanks for raising questions. This is a kind of policy that exists at a number of campuses and is part of kind of our overarching effort to try to improve the success of our students. I think, as Dan pointed out, this really is a situation a number of students historically have found themselves in. They may have started college at a relatively early age or at a stage in their lives when they really weren't able to apply themselves. And, you know, I know that often returning students are much better, you know, are much better equipped to apply themselves. So the aim of this proposal is if someone has been out for a while and wants to give higher education a second start, this allows them to actually hit the ground running in a way they wouldn't be able to if they had to figure in all of the relatively low grades they got earlier. So that's the basic purpose of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that might arise with this program.
Any questions?
Thank you for the additional information.
Okay, so I don't think we have to vote on this item. If there's any other questions about it. If none, I would like to move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? Henry, okay, thank you, everybody. Meeting is officially adjourned. Good to see you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.